We've already called the meeting to order before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session and welcome to visitors. I know we have some folks joining us this evening to listen in on the meeting. And so, welcome to you if you are here to listen. If you could please make sure that your video is off and that your microphone is muted. That will keep us from having a lot of background noise. Thank you. This is the time for opportunity for public participation. We had temporarily suspended policy BEDH. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcasting Live. We are however, we've been able to allow people to participate through the Zoom meeting. If they so indicate to Jennifer Lively, she's our secretary. And so therefore, I need to entertain a motion to vote to reinstate policy BEDH under these conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mike moved and Haley seconded. All those in favor? Say aye or wave or something. Thank you. It looks like we're all good. Okay, thank you. So I'll just review for a minute how this new process works. It's still a bit new, but I think it really has been working well. We're happy that we are able to figure out how to include public participation by means of Zoom. And again, Jennifer takes information from people if they want to make a comment. And then Tina, our tech person lets people into the Zoom waiting room. And we're now able to let people in who just want to listen. Somebody, thank you, needs to turn off their audio. Thank you. So when Jennifer will call on you, when it's your turn to make a comment, please state for us your name as you begin, and that would be helpful. Thank you.
So I actually don't have anyone. I had one that maybe wanted to, but she just messaged me that she's gonna wait. Most of the comments, they wanted to comment after hearing the plan. So they'll likely see them for next time when they've heard the presentations that we're gonna have tonight.
Okay.
I did get several email comments. So if you'd like, I can go through those now or at whatever time you think is best.
I think that would be fine because we did add that to the message this time. The people were welcome to email a comment they'd like made at the meeting to Jennifer at her school committee address or at the main office here of Jennifer. And we do have some, right Jennifer?
Yeah, so I did receive quite a few emails. Some of them just wanted to have a better understanding of the process and what's happening, when and how to follow. So I've been trying to pass that message along that folks can watch on MCTV Live. And we've now got staff there out of the area able to come onto the Zoom and listen. So we hopefully have a way for everybody to hear what the discussion is tonight. And anytime that there's another meeting in town and we're not on MCTV Live, there's always a recording on Vimeo. And the Montague Reporter and occasionally the Greenfield Reporter cover our meetings as well. So just wanted to mention that because I get a lot of questions just asking about that. And then as far as comments on the reopening is what's on everyone's mind. I had four say that they would like full remote for everyone. I had three say that they'd like remote with in-person for specific populations or groups. And then one wanted fully open for mental, social, emotional concerns and just continued isolation in the health of kids with that. Several emails were discussing kids with IEPs. Those students and whether or not their needs can be met with remote learning if we end up in that model. Interestingly enough, I had a few that say their student with an IEP was not able to have their needs met with remote. And I had a few saying that they were able to meet their needs with remote. So I had advocacy on both ends of that. Some other suggestions and comments that I heard through the email responses were some had changed their minds since the initial survey. Based on current trends statewide, they had previously felt more comfortable and now feel less likely to return in person. Some wanted a plan for students to meet their new teachers in smaller groups or one-on-one even prior to starting because they've been out of school for so long and they'll be, you know, with a new teacher that they don't know. Parents express needing flexibility with remote learning. They express a concern with lack of local testing in the area and response time and, you know, not being very clear on what the numbers in the area. Some suggested a default should be remote. Parents having to sort of apply or opt in if they wanted in-person with a specific criteria for higher needs. Wouldn't mention the summer program and wanted to know if it was possible to do that type of outdoor learning model with the highest risk students. So there was a lot of, a lot of different comments. Most wanted to know when they're gonna hear the plan and how they can comment once they've heard the plan. So we'll go over those tonight and welcome to email me through the GMRSD website. You can, you can send me an email through there. And I will collect them and make sure the full committee is aware of all the comments. And we'll have public participation at the next meeting as well before we vote. So I think that covers the, I tried to group them together and try to make everyone's point get heard. So that's, that's what I got from the public.
Thank you Jennifer very much. And just another quick note on that, we will continue as Jennifer said, the same way with public participation. And we are working on setting up a live stream link for those people that do not have access to MCTV. And once that is established so that anyone in the community can use that, we will get that information out as widely as we possibly can and we'll make that available as well. And I know there was a question last time about MCTV not having the video on Vimeo immediately. And that was because there was a problem with the MCTV broadcast. I believe the taping had an issue, so it couldn't be on there. So Tina Mahaney, our tech person uploaded her tape to our website. And I believe we'll also do her best to get a tape of that on MCTV as well. Okay, thank you. For important events, for the time being, we simply, yes?
Sorry, I just had a question in relation to the public comment. I'm just wondering, and this might be more of a question to Jen, if the people that had emailed in had wanted their specific comments to be distributed to the committee? Or if it was just for Jen to read?
Jennifer?
I think it might be important. We're breaking up. I think I've got the gist of what you're asking. Some of the, I couldn't email the full school committee because of deliberation rules. But there, because I'm the secretary, they can fix that. So I can email forward the letters that I received, the lengthier letters I received. I'm gonna send to the full committee. Kids working on that. And then the ones that were just short couple sentences, I'm sort of just collating.
Yeah.
So that everyone can hear. Unless you want all of them, but I can definitely send you a full inbox. But definitely the longer letter you'll all get.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, under important events, we wanted to mention that the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee, which is composed of representatives from as many groups as we could, teachers, administrators, nurses, the food service, the, all the upper administration. We have parents on it. We have school committee members on it. I think that about covers the areas. This advisory committee and the four subcommittees made up of people from that advisory committee continue to meet weekly to share and provide information for the administrative team in the school committee. And I see us continuing that for quite some time so that we can keep working on everything as it develops. Okay, superintendent's report. Superintendent Beck? Oh, you're muted.
So before I begin reviewing, what I did was I put together a PowerPoint that I'm gonna throw up on the screen. There are some people that I'd like to take the opportunity to thank. First of all, the school committee for their patience and understanding. Carl Zariah and Kelly Goble as leadership of the Teachers Association have been very helpful in terms of getting us information, helping us to gather information and consulting with us along the way in the development of this draft plan. The administrative team, Joanne Blyer, Christine Lamoges, Diane Ellis, Melissa Petra, Sarah Bernstein, Joni Menard and Lisa Dejarle did a phenomenal job of holding themselves up for several days in addition to all the other meetings that we had to put together what are far more refined building-based plans than I would have expected at this particular point in time. So thank you for all your hard work. Also, Melissa Benarski, as the pandemic response nurse leader, has been phenomenal in reviewing all of the various protocols and meeting frequently with the health professionals from the Board of Health on a regular basis. Heather Holmes, Heath Cummings, who is attending tonight, in case there are some questions, as well as members of the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee. I also wanted to send a thank you to Dr. Annie McKenzie of Hadley, who was really helpful in terms of allowing us. And Carol Jacobs, superintendent in Georgetown, both of whom were helpful in allowing us to use some of their, some aspects of their plans as templates and helping us to be able to start out with particular aspects of the language and how we wanted to describe things to the community. Most of all though, you know, and if we were in person, I'd ask for a standing ovation. Tina Mahaney has been the busiest human being that I have ever seen on the planet. We could, I could not be more impressed with another human being's time and effort into doing things the right way. And I think the thing that's most impressive and infectious for sure is that Tina is constantly smiling, constantly happy and always has the attitude of, don't worry, we can get it done. Tina, I cannot thank you enough for setting a tone of happiness, no matter what the circumstances are, the working environment because of you people is phenomenal here. So thank you. I want to remind the committee that I've asked the principals and Heath to join us just for the, just for this part of the meeting. So when I start the PowerPoint, you're not gonna see, I'm not gonna be able to see if people have questions, but Jane will. So if you want to ask questions of the principals while they're here, when I'm done doing this review, if there are no further questions, I'd like to dismiss the other members of the administrative team so that they don't come in bleary eyed in the morning because we have a lot more stuff to do. So.
If I miss somebody who's indicating they'd like to speak, just speak up, please.
So one of the other things too is that I want to make clear that in doing this presentation and making the, bringing forth the recommendation of the superintendent and the administrative team for tonight is not a vote. The school committee will vote for the plan that we're gonna open school on August 18th. And that's important to know because the plan itself, which school committee has, will be released to all of the staff and all of the members of the community tomorrow and posted on the website as a public plan. And then that'll be a piece of communication. So just want everybody to know, this is only for discussion, asking questions. There's no vote tonight on the plan to start school. Okay? This is purely informational. So I'm gonna put the PowerPoint up on the screen now and hopefully this will go well. Okay, share screen. Okay, are people able to see that? Are you able to, not yet? So you wanna help me share this?
While we're working on, have everyone please mute?
There it is. Okay.
Yes, now we can see it. Thank you.
Okay. So in this, in this process, there were really three things that we were trying to do. One, to create a plan based on science designed to significantly reduce the possibility of transmission of COVID-19 while educating students. Two, we want to ensure that all students have the best chance to move forward and are supported academically, socially and emotionally. Three, we want to find the safest way possible to return to on-campus teaching and learning. The values that guided the development of the plan, the health and safety of students, staff, families and the community was our top priority. Two, that we're all on the same team working together and it has created a really positive collaborative environment that's been very helpful for us. We also are guided by the fact that we are in a constantly changing decision-making environment. This includes virus trends, research that becomes available, as well as the constantly changing guidance from both the governor and the Department of Education. We wanted to be able to provide the school committee with a framework for them to be able to make the best decision with the information available at the time. We also want to be prepared to shift or pivot between learning modes over the course of the school year as things evolve and provide families the best, the opportunity to make the best choice for them.
Excuse me just a minute. I think somebody who's listening in forgot to mute their microphone. Please check. Thank you.
So a couple of things to keep in mind when you see the plan tomorrow, that the district and the building-based plans are active drafts. And these will change in real time as virus trends and information evolve. And through the course of our collaboration with teachers and with the school committee, as well as with boards of health or with nurse leaders and medical professionals, there's always the chance that we make changes to aspects of this. One of the things that I will make a commitment to in communication is if there is anything that's a substantial change to any one of the individual school plans or the district plan, I'm gonna want to highlight that in a communication that I will send out to the community and post it so that people don't have to sift through what is a very sophisticated plan to find this information. The next thing is there are some things that we know about how to educate students in a global pandemic because not only did we have that experience in the spring, but I really feel like people put together a great survey before I got here that gave us a lot of information from both families as well as teachers about how we could do things better if we're stuck in a remote situation. And that really adapts also to the hybrid situation that we've developed. So that we've learned a lot and that's guided a lot of what we've done over the summer in terms of our training, as well as our purchasing for new technology and using some of the COVID funding and the grants that have been made available to us to really create what is a more robust system. And I'm really appreciative of the teacher and family feedback that helped guide that. It's based on the guidance from the Department of Education, which is frequently changing, medical and community research, the survey data and family and teacher input. It is not something that is just copped together. It's very well thought out. As part of that, I do want to alert people to the fact that this plan, and I am not at this particular point going to be submitting a full in-person plan that has all of the kids in school, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But this has more detail on each school's hybrid and fully remote models, which can be interchanged. So as I mentioned, the plan was developed with directives and guidance from the Department of Education as well as the governor. We conducted a feasibility study with space and staffing very early on in the process before I had arrived as superintendent, that data was available. We did, so with collaborative work with the administrative team, the surveys from families, caregivers and staff, we established a pandemic response advisory committee, which we subsequently broke up into four subgroups or subcommittees. The first subcommittee is equity and access. The second subcommittee is instruction and assessment. The third subcommittee is personal protective equipment and safety protocols. And the fourth subcommittee is communications. And I want to thank all of those people who are making contributions to that, to that group and doing really hard work, both in the entire committee, but also in the subcommittees. The district health professionals have frequently consulted or met directly with Board of Health medical professionals. The plan has been reviewed and approved by both the Gill and Montague Boards of Health. We're fortunate to have ongoing collaboration with teachers and teacher leaders. And we have had the opportunity to have extensive collaboration with local superintendents. While sometimes it seems like it might be a therapy session for us, it certainly is something that has benefited us in terms of trading and stealing ideas from one another and trying to get on the same page, as well as making requests to the Commissioner of Education to delay submissions when appropriate. So just acknowledging a couple of things about virus trends right now. One, that COVID-19 is more prevalent nationally than when schools were closed in the spring. Secondly, regional case counts and percent positive test results are lower in the region than they were during the spring closure. However, there's a recent trend upward in case counts. And you may be aware because it was announced today, if you were listening to the radio or saw it on TV, that has prompted Governor Baker to suspend his phasing process. He has suspended part, moving to phase two of, part two of phase three of the reopening process and has reduced the number of people allowed at outside and inside gatherings from 100 people to 50 people for outside gatherings and from 50 people to 25 for inside gatherings. So to get to the full in-person model and so that people have an understanding of why we're not submitting one. In the course of the feasibility study, there were no subgroups or no stakeholder groups that really found three feet social distance to be a safe enough opportunity. And our feasibility study indicated that we could not fit all of the students into our buildings to meet the six feet requirement. So I wrote to the commissioner to let him know that we were gonna, I was not gonna waste the time and effort of all of us, including families, to try to put together something that we saw as impossible to do right now. And so we have instead spent our time developing better remote and hybrid models than we would have been able to if we had to take the time at this particular point in time to put together a full in-person model. We will submit a full in-person model well in advance of the need to consider moving to such a model as the metrics change over time or as the pandemic abates. So the hybrid model presents us with an on-campus option. Students are able to go to school on designated days. The advantage of this is it reduces the possibility of transmission because it cuts in half. Our model cuts in half the number of students in the building at any one time. It allows us to meet at minimum six seats of, six feet of separation for desk tables in transitions. And it allows us to take a more gradual approach to opening. There are obviously family considerations. This will have an impact on working families if students are in school part-time. It'll also impact staff with children in childcare and families will need to coordinate their schedules. It's also important to highlight, and I'll highlight this twice as I receive questions on this almost, almost any day, but I'll reiterate it all the time, that as long as the virus is considered a public health threat, that any family can remain remote. So this is the elementary or just the details and bullet points of the hybrid elementary model, that there are two cohorts of students at each grade level. One cohort of students will be in-person while the other cohort is learning remotely. Cohort A attends school in-person on Monday and Tuesday. And cohort B participates remotely either synchronously or asynchronously. And what that means is asynchronously means they'd be doing work independently and perhaps communicating with teachers as opposed to actually being videoed into the classroom, which would be synchronous learning. Cohort B attends school in-person on Thursday and Friday. And cohort A flips into the at-home learning. On Wednesdays, all students are remote and that day will be used as a day for the schools to do a thorough cleaning and disinfection. The staff will teach on Wednesday mornings and the staff will collaborate and plan instruction in the afternoon on Wednesdays. Plans for priority populations I will talk about later are still in development. The secondary hybrid model is similar, if not the same, as the elementary model, but it does have a cohort AB, which is just an indication that the priority populations of students, our most needful learners. The plan to integrate those kits is a little bit more advanced at the secondary level at this particular point in time, although, you know, when you see our recommendation, we'll still do some work on that for September 8th. The fully remote learning models obviously significantly reduces the possibility of transmission, transmission of the virus in schools. It's based on family and teacher feedback from the spring closure, which allowed us to make improvements to the technology-based delivery of instruction. The district will provide one-to-one devices as well as hotspots for families that don't have internet access to address digital inequity. The improved technology and the work that teachers have done, as well as Christine Lamoges and Tina Mahaney in putting together what was an outstanding training for 12 teachers over the summer who will serve as collegial experts for the other teachers who will learn how to use these systems. Our experience from the spring has really informed how we can do things better, both in our fully remote model as well as hybrid. So students will be engaged in learning activities in live virtual meetings at multiple points during the day. And what's different about the remote learning model that's being proposed for the fall, as well as the hybrid model, is that there are gonna be expectations for content, expectations for attendance, courses are going to be graded and the schedule is going to, relatively speaking, follow a normal school day schedule. This is, we recognize that this is the most challenging learning model for most families. So the elementary remote model has schedules that were developed to reflect the developmental needs of students at various levels. It includes expectations for content, attendance grading, time on learning and communication, provides daily live contact between home and school multiple times throughout the day, clear daily schedule for specialists as well as paraprofessionals. And all students will be issued a Chromebook and internet hotspots will be made available. For the secondary remote model, this includes expectations for content, attendance grading, provides daily live contact, clear daily schedule for specialists as well as paraprofessionals. And the same, all students will be issued a Chromebook and internet hotspots will be made available. You can look at, everybody will be able to see the specifics on the school-based plans tomorrow. And we will, we've been given the suggestion to, for each school, try to get down to a one-page summary for families of the expectations for participation in both the remote and hybrid models. And so those are communications that will come out closer to September 14th for families. So what is the recommendation? So this is the superintendent's recommendation. This is not to imply to anybody that I do not. that I do not have the authority to make a decision about the return to school. That authority rests with the committee. However, at this particular point in time, I'm recommending that we begin the school year remotely for all students. We're going to engage with the families on how to, on, with families on how to best support priority populations for the development of a proposal for the September 8th School Committee meeting. And I've made recommendations for checkpoints over the course of the beginning of the school year. Since we're fortunate enough that we have school committee meetings scheduled every two weeks and looking to have at least three weeks of lead time between a school committee meeting and when students might return. And I'll explain the reasons why for that. At each of those checkpoints, it will be important for the school committee to have access through the dashboard that's provided from the CDC in the plan. There are a huge number of links in the plan that connect to the CDC and Department of Education advisories. The most important metrics will be regional case counts, statewide case counts, as well as percent positive tests statewide and regionally. Jane, can everybody still hear me?
I can hear you, so I believe so.
Okay. So priority populations, the Department of Education defines a priority population as students with disabilities, including those in pre-K with considerable need, English language learners, students who are in foster care or who are homeless, or students who are not able to access remote learning. So we have identified as a district, all the students who fall into the priority populations and will be working with those families as we begin or complete the process of putting together proposals related to having those students better supported both in remote as well as in the hybrid environment. So why should we open remotely? So this is the rationale for our recommendation. One, we need time to plan, we need time to communicate, and we need time to hire additional staff before we can get students on campus. There is extensive training required for everybody. This begins with the teachers and paraprofessionals and our, who need to go through training to understand how to use our far more capable educational technology. But it includes extensive training around safety, sanitation and health protocols. It'll also provide us the opportunity to identify and address the challenges of implementation of any of these protocols before students arrive on campus and integrate those into what is a live draft, live and working draft. We also need to complete with another organization, another outside organization with whom we've contracted to complete the next phase of the HVAC evaluation and implement those recommendations, as well as update the room configurations, get out additional materials as needed, and to await the remaining PPE for personal protective equipment, other materials such as shields for teacher desks, nurses' desks, and those things that we are still waiting, awaiting to arrive in the district. We're also going to need time to train students and families about those protocols. And I will talk about that in further slides. In addition, there is survey data, that, pretty significant survey data that supports this model to start, including of those families who responded, 27% of the families who responded to the survey in July indicated that they have health concerns for people in their home or vulnerable populations in their homes. And 48% of families indicated that they are going to do either fully remote learning or were unsure about sending their students back to school on campus. So in moving toward a remote plan at some point in time, there are some things to keep in mind. But even for remote learning and that recommendation, there are some really important things that we all have an obligation to do. So all members of the school community have to take the time and follow the protocols to protect one another. One, and probably one of the most important things is that we're gonna have to spend a great deal of time training staff and we should send out, we're gonna put together a video for families about self-screening protocols. So before everybody who's gonna be coming on campus leaves their house in the morning, they have to make sure that they don't have any of the potential symptoms or that if they feel well, that they make a commitment to keep their child home or if they are a staff member, that they stay home themselves. And that is probably one of the most important things because we have to trust that everybody is gonna follow through with that or we leave every other person in our buildings at risk. Everybody also has an obligation to pay attention to the governor's travel order, especially as summer is wrapping up and we're approaching the opening of school. Many families are moving about and you need to check which states are approved or not approved and follow the guidelines for self-isolation and quarantine. Everybody's gonna need to follow the protocols for entry into buildings and movement throughout the buildings. And as I mentioned earlier, training for students and parents needs to take place on COVID protocols so that they have an understanding of what they're supposed to do. Just today, important, an important study was put out indicating that if you don't have one of the M95 or K95 masks or a surgical mask, that cotton masks are better and that families looking to provide their students, their children with their own masks should avoid using polyester masks, which seem to exacerbate the spread of particles. So what are the expectations in these, in coming back to school? Again, there's an emphasis on the self-assessment of everybody's health for safe attendance. The fact that everyone will wear masks in school, faculty, staff and students, pre-K through 12 with the following exceptions, if there's a medical issue and a physician's notice provided. When there are scheduled mask breaks, we'll take these outside whenever possible. Or select students may be unable to consistently wear a mask, given their disability and/or their developmental needs. Everybody will need to adhere to social distancing. We'll set our rooms up to make sure that desks and students are more than six feet apart. Schedules, as they are further developed, will account for safe passing in the hallway to minimize the number of students in the hallway at any one time and limiting movement so that we don't end up in a situation where we end up with those pictures of crowded hallways like we saw in Georgia. Which, by the way, that school is closed with 10 identified cases. So the COVID-19 protocols that are contained within the plan, we developed from the DESI guidelines, guidelines from the CDC. And they, they all allude to increased cleaning, sanitization, protocols for concerns about exposure, and the advisory on how schools should handle concerns about exposure and considerations for school and district closure at any point in time. Again, I'm gonna continue to emphasize the need for families to screen their children and for staff to screen themselves before they come to campus. Every campus will have a COVID-19 waiting room in each school will be, where students who are identified as needing to be picked up by their parents because they're exhibiting symptoms or don't feel well will be required to wait so that they are not in the nurse's office. Some of the advisories and some of the information that will be sent out to families will include, you know, promoting wellness, making recommendations potentially about people getting flu vaccines while they might not have in the past because we are concerned about the intersection in fall and winter, about the intersection between the pandemic still be, still being present in the community and cold and flu season, you know, causing more concern in terms of people being concerned about potential exposure. The nurses are trained and the nurse pandemic leader, Melissa Bednarski, has done a phenomenal job of being, being prepared. She's already trained a group of staff for the summer school and will be prepared to train staff, students and family when we arrive on those protocols. And tents will be available on each campus for mask breaks as well as in some cases instructional activities. This is just a list of general health and safety protocols that either have been done or are being worked on before folks come into the building and things that are considerations. So for example, I talked about some of these already with hand sanitizer dispensers throughout the building, that there are going to be aggressive cleaning and sanitizing schedules added. In addition to that, we are hiring additional custodial and maintenance staff with grant funding to meet the increased sanitation and cleaning requirements, which have to, have to happen far more frequently than they would under normal circumstances. In addition, no visitors will be allowed into school buildings beyond the office to minimize the number of people that come into the building when we are in on-campus learning situations. And during those times, meetings such as IEP meetings or other team meetings will be held online whenever possible, or we will put together a safe alternative such as phone conference or even consider meeting outside the building at a safe social distance. So school meals will be served in conjunction with Heather putting together with each of the building principals a plan. They have worked on that and some of that information is in the building-based plans. Students will not be eating in the cafeterias. But this note just indicates that Hillcrest Sheffield Middle and High School students are all eligible for free and reduced lunch. At Gill Elementary, people will need to fill out the community eligibility provision and free and reduced lunch forms that are sent out to consider to be qualified for free and reduced lunch. And as far as meal pickup, that'll be announced at a later date. As you know, I already sent out a summary of the school year calendar changes, but just wanted to remind people the school year calendar has been reduced for students from 180 to 170 school days. New teacher orientation will begin on Monday, August 24th, and staff will begin the school year on Tuesday, August 25th. Grades one through 12 are scheduled to renew, resume student learning on Monday, September 14th. And pre-K and kindergarten are currently scheduled to begin learning on Monday, September 21st. As of right now, we are still awaiting guidance on all of our after-school programs. I can say, you know, and I recognize that I'm articulating a frustration right now, but we were supposed to have gotten guidance from the Department of Education. It was promised to us at the end of, toward the end of July, and then it was promised to us again last week. We still have not gotten it at this particular point in time. And so there isn't anything that we can do to provide an answer about, are we gonna have fall athletics right now? We're still waiting for the Department of Education. The establishment of a September 14th start date for practices has been established by the MIAA, but everything is on hold until such time that we get the guidance from the Department of Education. So for transportation, registration forms are gonna be sent out to identify families that will need transportation and those families that will provide their own transportation. We'd like to get this back by Friday, August 28th, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna get this out by the end of the week. And then the routes will be published prior to on-campus learning. On buses, you know, masks must be worn by every student with no exceptions. There'll be daily cleaning between routes. There is gonna be a substantially smaller number of students. And part of the reason that we want to get the survey is to see whether or not, see how many kids will be riding any bus on a run to determine whether or not we need to have multiple bus runs or that we can do it with one each day. There'll be one student per seat unless sitting with siblings. And students must fill out the registration form if they wish to ride district transportation. So as far as communicating with families, I will continue to provide a weekly update as long as we are dealing with the pandemic. It will be emailed and will be posted on the school and district website. It'll be emailed to families and staff. The district website will also be a source of information. The draft plan will also be a source of information. Once that is posted and it will be emailed out to families also, and that's gonna be out tomorrow. That draft plan, even though it will be evolving, is a place that you can, every family can go to to get answers, including a connection to the CDC website and the COVID-19 dashboard, which gives an enormous amount of data about the virus in the area. The principals will also continue to send out their newsletters, which will contain any building-based direction or information for families. People can also email me at my email address. And again, I'll, I'll ask that this PowerPoint be posted on the school website after tonight. So as far as supporting educators and staff, there are federal COVID leaves for specific reasons on a case-by-case basis. So the administration will email out to staff links to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Family Medical Leave Act. So some things that I want people to take away from their reading of the plan when they look at it, as well as the summary. So our first objective was to consider safety. We have to all continue to acknowledge that we are in this together. There are a ton of forces out there that are seeking to be divisive and play us all against one another, and we can't do it. We can't do it. It's not gonna be helpful. It's not gonna get us to where we need to be. We have to be flexible, open-minded and nimble, so to speak, because things are gonna change quickly, that this is a complex and ongoing process. We need to keep lines of communication open and increase frequency as plans evolve. And so I will tell you that, again, I'm gonna reiterate, if something substantial evolves in one of those draft plans for a building, that's going to have an impact, I'm gonna communicate that to families immediately and just be very specific about what the change is so that they don't have to sift all the way through the entire district document. We have to remain vigilant. I want to emphasize again that the remote option is available to every family as long as the virus has continued to be a public health risk. And we're all bummed out about the fact that we still haven't been able to see our kids and we are excited to reconnect with them and begin the process of learning together. So feedback for the school committee, that tomorrow morning, when we send out the plan, we are also going to send out a survey to parents and staff. We, you know, there'll be a deadline in there. We really need to get that back by Monday, the 17th. So you're gonna wanna take a look at this quickly because the school committee is going to vote on the reopening model to be used to start off the school year next Tuesday, August 18th. Again, a reminder, if you want to send communications directly to the school committee, that's the school committee secretary is Jennifer Lively, and I will have her email again in our communications going forward, as well as placing it, placing in, it's in this PowerPoint and posting the PowerPoint up on the screen. And that's the basic PowerPoint summary.
Thank you Superintendent Beck. Heather?
Just wanted to let you know that Carl's hand was up.
Okay, Carl?
Actually, my hand was not up. I think that was applause for Tina from earlier. I probably clicked the wrong response button. Thank you.
But thanks for noticing. This is a good time. If anyone has any questions, we're very appreciative. We have all the administrators here this evening as well as the superintendent. So if you have any questions about the plan in general or even the specific building plans, please feel free to wave at me or yell or something.
So Jane?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me okay? Am I not drawn out again?
It's better now.
Okay, so in terms of providing feedback to this school committee, might get bugged out, we can go directly to Jen. I'm just thinking that in terms of like public participation, I feel that works better, but that might be
You're breaking up again.
Heavy burden. I don't wanna speak for Jen, but just a thought. We've just seen that go through the secretary before. I'll type it.
So if I heard, if I heard, I think I heard you correctly, Cassie, and I think you're rightfully concerned about the burden for communication for Jennifer and the efficiency with which she may be able to, or the burden to turn that around and get that feedback to school committee?
Right. That, that occurred to me as well, that it, it would be a lot to deal with probably.
We've just, in any instance, we've never had public, we've never had comments go to the secretary and then be filtered in. That was my only thought. I, I'm not sure if it's getting confused with like the public participation aspect.
Yeah, I can clarify. Yeah, I can clarify that in my neck, in my, when I send out the email about the plan, that I can clarify that people, I'll do the same to Jennifer, if it's okay with you, I'll do the same to points of clarification, that if somebody wants to make a public comment at next Tuesday's school committee meeting, because people wanted to reserve comments tonight, because they just wanted to be able to see the plan before they did it. So I would imagine we will have many, many more people who will actually jump in and take two or three minutes to share their thoughts next week, and that will reduce, that should reduce the number of emails that she has to take on.
And maybe since, I was thinking along the same lines as Cassie, maybe since it's responding to the plan itself, perhaps emailing the superintendent and myself, or one or the other perhaps would, you know, then it could confine her to getting the comments, particularly.
Okay.
Bill?
Thanks for your concern.
I just wanted to want to add to the opening discussion that the reason for the delay in opening is because of the training, or whatever work is going on, professional training. And I think that needs to be stressed more to reinforce the notion that the remote situation is going to be more consistent and advanced from last spring, hopefully. Is that fair?
Thank you. Yes. And for committee members as well as the public, if questions occur to the committee members after the meeting is over, certainly, you know, you're welcome to express your questions as well as the community before we meet next Tuesday for our vote. Does anyone else on the committee have anything at the moment?
Me.
Mike?
Thank you. And I imagine we'll hear more about this as we go on, but to piggyback off of William's, off of Bill's comment, there were restrictions placed on all schools for their remote teaching and learning. This is something I've just recently learned, so that's why I'm in a big hurry to spread it around. So we were complying with Desi's orders last year for our remote learning, so that the experience will be quite different, because the expectations, not just from Desi, but they're also not putting limitations on. And just what I've learned most recently is that our staff was very excited to make the most of the opportunity and made a lot of progress last spring, and are eager to continue that progress, and feel very strongly that they will be offering a high-quality education product, pardon the jargon. And I, you know, for the last five months or so, people who've been following my concerns will be aware that I was concerned that we weren't providing, based on experiences from last year. So I've learned an awful lot about why last year was the way it was. Part of it was restrictions placed on by Desi. I'm not, you know, pointing fingers, that's not the point. But for all of us who are very concerned about keeping kids up to speed, et cetera, et cetera, I'm a very, much more optimistic than I was just a week ago, that this is actually something that's working and going on, and I want to thank the teachers for the continued work, and there'll be more about that, I'm sure, because I know parents are concerned about that. Probably the biggest concern, really, remote learning, is that a real thing? Well, apparently, yes, it is. So, stay tuned.
Thank you.
Cassie has her hand up.
Okay, Cassie, I can only see part of the folks, so you have to speak up. Thank you, Brian.
Hopefully you can hear me better. I think they fixed my microphone. But I want to kind of piggyback on what you said and say, just so that families know, I spent a lot of time with other, with other people working on the reopening plan, and there was a lot of thoughtful conversations that went through. And important to remember that back in the spring, we had a bunch of teachers hit the ground running, and it was a really difficult situation. And we've had a lot of thoughtful conversations now, and I think that, I think it's going to look very differently. Can I have a district hotspot? Would I be able to get one? Is that a thing?
I think that's a great idea. If I could add to that, one of, one of the things that we had as a, as a point of discussion today, when we were, when we met as an administrative team to review my summary, I mean, obviously, they've had access to the plan from the beginning, but from the time I arrived until, in through today, I received an enormous number of unsolicited compliments to the work that the teachers did to make this happen in the spring, when it was imposed on them, without any warning at all whatsoever. And that is, was not only something that provides us an incredible foundation, but like I said, we got great feedback. And then that feedback was taken by the members, by the principals, as well as the members of the administrative team who worked with Joanne through the grant process. And then what Christine and Tina did in terms of putting that training together, I would think that teachers would provide, you know, they, again, provided us with feedback on the training, but to have 12, 13 people and four principals leave the building excited about being able to build on that foundation, whether we were hybrid, remote, or heck, did we take advantage of an opportunity that was forced upon us to create a learning model that might be used differently when we're finally out of this darn pandemic. So I'm very happy with the feedback that I've received unsolicited about how the district did with this, when they couldn't plan for it. And I think it'll be, it'll continue to be refined up, up through when students start.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone have any questions on the part of the committee? We certainly appreciate. Bill?
I have one more detail that I'd like to hear in the future. Part of your development is the notion of whether or not teachers should be performing their duties in the school, in their classroom, that notion that it might be helpful for, for teachers to be in their classroom, for whatever reason. I look at that as requiring that our technology is able to broadcast each individual teacher, but I know that's an issue that's come up in several other parts of the country, as well as this state. And so that's just another point that I'd like to address at some time. I'm not suggesting that that's what's going to happen, but certainly in your model for remote learning, you have to, I think we need to understand how that remoteness is generated.
Agreed. Yep, and it's an issue that we'll have to address soon, because even, even though teachers are slated to come back on the 25th, we do have some teachers who are going to be expected to start early, so I will work with teacher leaders over the course of the next couple of days to hopefully work within the context of our current agreements, and then make a decision about pivoting in some direction on the 18th. And we can also look at data, you know, again, that's, that's the most important thing about what it is that we do at that particular point in time, and what is the safest thing for our staff, you know, given that we could isolate them in their classrooms and so forth, it'll be a point of discussion. We do need to talk about our trainings, given the recommendations and the limitations that have been placed on, you know, and this is one of those things that's irritating, and as I'm sitting in on commissioner calls today, that they said, as I mentioned, reduced outdoor gatherings from 100 to 50, reduced indoor gatherings from 50 to 25, and then said, but schools are exempted. So apparently, teachers and administrators aren't people, you know, we don't, we don't count, it doesn't impact us, we're exempted. So I think we'll be attentive to that as, as general guidance anyways, even though we are exempted, because health and safety is our top priority, just like we looked at the six-foot versus three-foot, you know, we're going to take that same approach.
I just want to add that anything that I would ask the teachers or any of the staff to do, as well as students, would be when I would be, feel safe doing it as well. So certainly, if that comes to pass, I am a supporter of, the committee will have to meet and open as well.
Would anyone else like to ask any questions? Okay. In that case, I'd like to thank everyone's behalf. Thank you all administrators for coming this evening. We appreciate it. And I'm sure we will talk to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, team. Thank you guys so much for being here.
Okay, next on our list is the business and operations report. So Joanne, if you would, please.
All right, I just have a few pretty good-sized things here. So we're still working on closing out fiscal '20, and we are waiting for all of our union contracts to be settled, so that way we can, we'll know the final numbers, so we can close that out. It's one of the last things we'll be waiting on for that. So it could be into September before we're finally closed on the year. For fiscal '21, the state put out Chapter 70 state aid figures as a baseline amount for fiscal '21. So in, in spite of the circumstances they're operating under, they did want to commit for funding for fiscal '21. And the numbers come in much better than I had anticipated. So for Gil Montague, our Chapter 70 increase for fiscal '21 is $480,000. So we were expecting a decrease of larger than that, so that's really good news for us. We don't know what fiscal '22 will bring, but fiscal '21, the number looks pretty good. So there's a few things that happened with this. So we have, the two towns need to vote our budget for us to have an actual budget. Montague has voted, Gill has not voted. And so because Gill has not voted, when the state puts out new Chapter 70 numbers, we need to look at the new requirements, minimum contribution requirements that the state puts out, and use those and reassess the two towns. And in doing that, Gill's assessment will go up slightly from what they had originally been assessed, but because they haven't voted their budget yet, the, I spoke to Chris Lynch at Desi, and she said, we need to use the minimum contributions, the new ones that have come out, and so we need to reassess the towns, even if that means it's going up. Our budget isn't going up, that we need to keep flat or lower, so that's what I'm proposing here. Now, had they voted their budget, and we actually had an approved budget, we would not have had to change our minimum contribution numbers, we would have just had to reassess the towns based on the old information. And they wouldn't have changed for either town. So, the assessments are here. I have information that I sent to you to revote a reduced budget. Transportation budget is a piece, is something that was amended in this budget reduction. So if you remember last year, you voted to move $100,000 into a transportation revolving account. So that was revenue we received in fiscal '20, put into a revolving account to use to support fiscal '21 budget. So we reduced the budget by that amount, and we're using the revolving account to fund that. We're also receiving less transportation revenue this year, because we had a lower cost last year. The percentage of what our transportation reimbursement is going to look like isn't out yet, and so we're still waiting on that. We're using an estimate, which is how we usually build the budget, and hopefully that number doesn't get hit in this economic downturn. Sometimes transportation does get hit a lot harder than Chapter 70, so we'll just have to wait and see what happens there. The third thing I changed in this budget was the Medicaid revenue, to reflect more current information that we have. Based on what we received in Medicaid in the past year, I reduced that revenue budget to be more in line with what we had received. Other grants that we received less money on are our title grants, Title I, Title II, Title IV. All of those grants were received, but they're lower, the allocations are lower than what we had anticipated. The total's probably by about $50,000 among the three grants, lower than what we had anticipated when we built the budget. So the original budget included a number of new positions, including first-grade paras, high school music, theater, and health teachers, adjustment counselors. And this revised budget assumes that some of those positions may be able to be filled, but not all of them. But we haven't gotten together and determined which, which positions we would not fund yet, but they're all in the same category of the budget in the instructional section. So we will bring that back to you when we have more information. So, we have this information, we have our new Chapter 70 number, we're going to reassess the towns, but we're still going to be operating under the 112th budget until Gill has their town meeting and can approve our budget. So I need a vote to approve the school budget, and I have the vote motion language right there. On the spreadsheets that I sent you, I, I showed you what our original all-funds revenue budget looked like, what the change is, what the reductions were, and then what our final all-funds revenue budget is. I showed you how that breaks down in revolving accounts and grants and circuit breaker, and then what the new assessment calculations look like. And on the back of that page, you can see the expenses for the general funds, what those changes were, and then for the grants and revolving accounts, and what those changes were. Does anyone have any questions on the budget changes that we made? Okay, so we have, I have the vote motion language there.
I'll entertain a motion. Mike?
Yeah, I'm with it. We approve a fiscal year 2021 general fund budget of $21,30387, $387. That includes the use of $150,000 from E&amp;D to support the budget and reduce assessments.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I know.
Heather seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Looks like we have it unanimously. Thank you. Okay.
All right, now I have a few other things. We applied for a couple of grants, a couple of S.R. grants or CARES grants, so... So the ESER grant, which we had been calling CARES, which is a coronavirus aid relief and economic security grant. We applied for that and received it in the amount of $252,634. It's a multi-year grant. There, the funds will be available through September, the end of September 2022. And it was written to include potential additional staff and expenses and include some, some funding for PPE for tents, instructional supplies and services that are necessary to hold our remote learning. These funds also need to be made available to private schools that are within our towns. And so for Wind School did take us up on that offer. And they'll be, we had to set money aside for them based on their population. The other grant is CVRF, the reopening grant for $227,250. And once these funds are received, and that was approved also just yesterday, I believe I received that notification. So we have a really quick window to use up those funds. That expires December 30th. So we, what we put into this grant is more the stuff that we need to buy now to just get going. Like the touch view interactive screens that we're buying for the hybrid and remote learning. The individual desks for when we have hybrid or when we are all in, in the building. So that way the students aren't sharing a table. Software to support distance learning. And then we put some money in there for more PPE. So we're also using this grant to cover our HVAC services to test and correct air quality as needed. And we're using it to cover the cost of the disinfecting system that will be installed on the buses that we use with Kosmascus. So much of that is underway. A lot of things have been ordered. And we'll just keep track of that, that funding. My hope is that we can save some of that ESER money since the window goes right through September of 2022. And we can use it for a future year when I think we'll be in rougher shape financially. And the last thing I want to talk to you about is transportation. So due to the ridership limitations this year, due to the pandemic, we are going to be doing that survey to ask families who would like transportation. And we're going to have to have them registered for the bus. So that way we can have contract, contact tracing, know who's on the buses. And you know, in order to be eligible to ride, they're going to have to fill out that form to say they would like to ride. So one of the things that we're going to have to do is only allow students that are attending school in their home school. So if a Montague student attends school in Gil, that wouldn't be their home school. Or if a Gil student attends school in Montague Elementary, that wouldn't be their home school. So only students attending their home school would be eligible to ride the buses. And that will, will minimize the number of students on the buses. If we were to continue to offer, it's really the Montague students that are riding the bus to Gil. If we were to continue to offer that, we would have to add a bus. We wouldn't be able to accommodate that on the bus. So that's one of the things that we're going to have to do in order to make this work. Our policy calls for kindergartners to ride the bus half a mile within, if they live just over half a mile from the school. So I don't know if that's something you would like to visit, revisit and say, you know, we'll just stick to the mile and a half for all students this year. It's difficult when we send the bus to higher populated areas that are within a mile and a half of the school to pick up just kindergartners. Because oftentimes we, we get their siblings that are, you know, they'd like them on the bus also. So it, it makes it difficult for families. It actually is confusing. You know, they, people don't understand why we allow their five year old to ride, but not their six year old. You know, the six year old's no more able to walk to school alone than the five year old was. So but it isn't the policy. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and put that out there for you to consider. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Cassie.
I think we should revisit that. Sorry, I'm echoing. I'm trying to talk into my phone. Just because I think it'll put bus drivers in a tough position because they won't be able to, you know, we can't do contact tracking with siblings if a sibling of a kindergartner jumps on the bus.
Generally with policy, well, our policy about policies is that we have three readings before we vote. The first being seeing it printed, which we've already had. And the second being we've had it discussed. And so that's our second opportunity. So if it's acceptable, I will put that on our next regular meeting, which would be the 25th. Is that soon enough, Joanne?
Yeah.
To think about that. So we will have the usual time to think about it. And then we can vote whether we want to keep the policy as is or whether we choose to change the policy at our next full meeting on the 25th of the month. Is that acceptable? Okay, thank you. Okay, and thank you, Joanne.
Jen has her hand up.
Oh, thank you. I missed that. Hi, Jen.
Hi, I just have a related question that isn't necessarily for school committee, but just bringing it up so others can maybe just do a reach out. The walking school bus is normally done through volunteers. And it, it can be a decent sized group. So just kind of bringing that to attention, that might be an area, I don't know if anybody's thought about it or not as to having COVID guidelines for that group. And also making sure that parents that maybe can't ride the bus for a kindergartner know that that's available to them.
Oh, thank you. Good point.
And you know, if we have the volunteers this year, I don't know, I don't know anything what's going on with that for this upcoming year with COVID. But it's been available in the past and we should probably check on it. It's not really a school committee thing, but anyway, Brian can make a note or the school principals.
Thank you, Cassie.
Um, so the walking school bus comes kind of by my house. So I see it and it is a good number of kids. And again, it's probably not a school committee thing, but that may need to be relooked at because if we're keeping three to six feet between kids, it could literally be extending up half of the hill and may not be a safe situation anymore.
Good point. Bill?
In consideration of this, would it be at all helpful to know what the demand for, for busing would be? I, I just think the kindergarten pickup is a fairly well established thing with the district for over 40 years. And through hard times. So I don't think, I'm not looking at it in terms of the financial aspect, which I'm sure Joanne is. No matter what, with fewer riders, we're going to get less, way less reimbursement next year. Even and that's assuming the state, how the state goes with funding reimbursement for transportation. But anyway, I like the notion of the kindergartners getting on the bus. And although I hadn't thought of the logistics of like siblings that are only a year apart. So it's, it's a good mix.
Joanne?
We wouldn't get less reimbursement because there's less kids on the bus. Cause we pay, we pay for the buses based on the cost per bus per day. And we get reimbursed based on that cost, not based on the number of students that are on the bus. Get paid, we get reimbursed based on the number of eligible students that are on the bus. So if we have students that are riding that are not eligible for the bus, for instance, the kindergartners, they're a half mile, they're eligible for the bus, but they're not, they're not reimbursable because they're less than a mile and a half. So we lose some money on that, but it's not a significant number that we lose. It's really not about the money, believe it or not. It's not me thinking about the money. I'm thinking about how many kids are going to be on those buses. And you know, how do we make those buses pick up the kids that really need to be on the bus that are eight miles away or seven miles away and, and have limited numbers of kids, 24 kids on a bus.
Can I have a question on what you just said is do we get charged by Kosmascus by the number of kids on the bus or by the bus trip? And so leading off what you just said, that we're not getting reimbursed for some kids. If we're not paying anything different for more kids riding the bus, then we're not really losing any money by my logic, which is illogic, but nonetheless.
We're not losing money, Bill, by having more kids or less kids. The number of kids on the bus doesn't make us lose money if they're all eligible riders. And we pay for the bus based on just a, a cost per day. No matter how many kids are on it. It's about keeping that number to 24 kids. So that way they're sitting in every other seat for the length of the bus instead of two kids to a seat, every seat. So you know, we could potentially have 60 kids on a bus or 70 kids on a bus if we filled those buses. Or even 50 is twice as many as what we need. So what we need is 24 kids on a bus. And so we just have to find a way to minimize those numbers and not pay an extra $70,000 for an extra bus.
So the issue is really not whether kids are on the bus or not. It's trying to keep the numbers down for the distancing.
That's right.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we will put that on, on our agenda for the next regular meeting. And we'll discuss it a bit more and see what we think. Okay, thank you. Under school committee reports, the warrant approval. We have one accounts payable warrant this time. It's number 3104 dated 8/12/2020 in the amount of $73,156.07. I will entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Haley moved and Mike seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Looks like everyone. Thank you. Okay. Under business this evening, we have a potential vote on a contract. Mike, if you would.
Sure, the negotiation subcommittee for unit A and the bargainers from unit A reached a tentative agreement at our last meeting. My understanding is that the unit A, our teachers have already ratified the tentative agreement. So we can vote on it also. Quick summary of, of, we talked about a lot of things. We were at it for about five years, I think. And then the COVID thing happened. So we, you know, had to dump a lot of that stuff. But mostly we agreed on three years and the pay for those three years. There were some minor language elements, but they mostly just codified what was already in existence. So none of that represents any change of service, expectation, any of that stuff. So the, the key points for this agreement. One is that it's three years, which is great. We'll be a solid team for three years, won't have to negotiate, argue and back and forth. That's helpful. The first year, which is the year that just ended, we agreed on a 2% raise for teachers. The second year is a sliding scale based on the amount of chapter 70 that's finally approved. It's a 5% or half a percent, 1%, 2%, depending on where that lands. Current, well, I think currently right now we're looking at a 1%, but we'll see where chapter 70 lands. And then the third year is a one and a half percent increase in salary on top of the the previous two years. And that in a nutshell is what we got and what we, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion that we approve the, that agreement.
Do I have a second? I'll second Haley. Thank you. Any discussion, questions or comments?
Well, I'll just reach out to the, to the unit A guys. Thanks very much. We got to know each other, spent a lot of time together. But it was a lot of work and it was rewarding and thank you very much. And, and thank you also to the school committee members who have aged quite a bit and have grandchildren and whatnot. But yeah, good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All those in favor? Looks like we have it unanimously passed. Thank you very much.
I saw Carl with his head.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Carl.
It's quite all right. I just wanted to thank everybody in the, on the bargaining team and the school committee for their, their hard work. And I'm hoping we can salvage some of that good work when we go forward with the next negotiation. And I'd like to think that it wasn't for nothing. We put a lot of time into that negotiation.
We, we did. We gave it our best. Absolutely.
Oh, and, and the reason that it all collapsed, of course, was the pandemic. And I'm not sure that that was stated yet.
Oh, right, right. Things changed, certainly. Okay, thank you all. The next item, which we've agreed to keep in our regular meetings as a regular item, is equity among the schools. Does anyone have anything at the moment that concerns that? Jennifer?
Another thing that we had talked about once quite a while ago was the different subscription services that each school has. And I thought maybe somebody might want to look at those again, especially in light of possible remote learning. I know there was different things offered, different grade, grade, grades and different schools. Just wanted to make sure that any remote service program app, whatever that is offered be consistent among schools as well as subscriptions to things like magazine type learning. You know, just anything that's a subscription service, just be equitable among grades across school.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, per grade, you know, because they're all grade level specific.
Thank you, Cassie.
We actually discussed this in the instruction subcommittee group for the reopening and made a list. It was based upon like assessments, but we also discussed different programs being used. And there were voices from throughout the different schools. So I think that that was really helpful. So that conversation is being had, which is awesome.
Thank you. Anything else on that? We will continue to put that on as a regular feature of the agenda. I think that makes sense. The next item is the final school year calendar, 2020 to 2021. This is included just to be informational with the change from the 180 days to 170 days for the students. We voted on it last time, but this shows what the calendar now looks like. So we all have a copy of that. Any questions or comments about that, Brian?
So just as a side note, I will put this on the school committee agenda in the future if we have to. Because of the change of the 10 days, schools have to apply for a waiver to start kindergarten later. So I intend to apply for that waiver. And if for some reason we need to start kindergarten with all of the other kids, we could put it on the August 25th agenda to change that in the calendar. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Yeah, I got one thing.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
On the recent
On the recent information from Desi, I think it was, talking about the mandating the 10-day instructional period for, for staff, it also talked about banking the two days for professional development or whatever might be there at the start of the year. And I know that was in the conversation over what the first day of school was a meeting ago with, with Carl as well. So is the district banking those two days or are you going with your original plan?
Well, well, I haven't considered banking at all. And primarily because of the extent of training that needs to be done. And while I trust the fact that Tina Mahaney and Melissa Bednarzki are really well-prepared to implement their stuff with all of our staff, I'm hopeful that we're going to create some videos and things like that for parents as part of that time, like, you know, and while the administrators might be doing that, the teachers also need some time to prep their rooms. They're going to have to move a lot of stuff in, out of their classrooms and into storage during some of those days, as well as becoming acquainted with the technology and having a full curriculum to deliver. So I think we'd be better off using it upfront. And then we already have those 12 teachers as well as a couple of other people to support those platforms. So I'm not advocating for moving something later in the year. We do have a bunch of half-days during the course of the year for right now that we could move and pivot things if we felt like we needed to. But that's a good question. I appreciate you asking it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. The next item is public participation in school committee meetings. As we discussed earlier tonight, we will continue to have the Zoom option available for people to come in and make a comment at public participation. And thanks to Jennifer receiving those. We also have offered people to send an email to her school email address or even if they would like to send a paper mail to the central office and care of Jennifer. We'll continue to do that. It seems to be really good to have public participation back again. So Jennifer?
And I also just want to reiterate that anything that comes to me is either summarized to the committee and if people send in letters, they will get forwarded so you can read the entire letter. So every, anything shared with me is, is going to be known by everyone.
Thank you. Yes. And, and people have also been offered the option of having their comments read or mentioned at the meeting or just having it sent to the committee as a whole if they don't want it brought up at a particular meeting. That's also another option. Okay. Thank you. The next item is in-person school committee meetings. I've been working with Tina Mahaney to figure out the logistics of that and it's, I'm going to have to turn on a little more light here. Sorry, it'll take me a minute. I haven't counted on the early darkness here. It was light when we started. When we investigated, looking at the way we might have in-person school committee meetings, we looked at the logistics of arranging them in different places like the school committee studio that we're used to using, maybe other places like the high school theater, community building or even outside. What we realized, once we started looking into the options, were a couple of things. The the studio itself would make it challenging to get the six-foot social distancing to work there. And any place that we wanted to hold it now, because of the rules for public health, we would have to have an individual microphone for each of us that would then be heard on the broadcast and the tape of the meeting. And right now, we don't have the capacity for that. We have other microphones, but they don't feed right into the recordings or the broadcast. So that wouldn't be effective in terms of people watching and listening to the meetings. And as we looked at those locations, in addition to that, even if we were to pick a place that was larger because of the governor's new regulations on in-person meetings, we wouldn't be able to include the public in person at our meetings. That would put our numbers too high and we would have to have some way to gauge who was allowed in. And in addition to that, once we discussed it, at this particular time, Montague Community Television would not be able to cover any in-person meetings. They would not be able to do that at this point. And as we looked at it, we would defeat our own purpose. The idea with having the meetings is to have them out there for the public to see and hear what is happening. And if any of those alternatives that included us meeting in person would mean that that couldn't happen. There wouldn't be a way to broadcast it to people or to have them participate as we've managed to do. So unfortunately, at this point, unless things change, we weren't able to come up with anything that would be feasible and still, you know, we really feel that public participation is important. And having this available for the community to see and hear our meetings is especially important at this point. So we just came to the conclusion it wasn't feasible right now. Anyone have anything about that? Mike?
These Zoom meetings sure are convenient. That's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, if it weren't for the bad audio and the computers cutting out and all those other just lovely things, it would be great. Just great. But we'll keep working on it as, as things change and, and some of the regulations change. We'll, as soon as we are able to and still be available to the community, we'll certainly look into it. Thank you. Review and discuss the draft reopening plans. I know we're going to have plenty of time in our next special meeting to discuss that. But if anyone has thought of any other particular items that they'd like to bring up at this moment, sometimes giving it a little time helps you think about it. Heather?
It's great to see that people will be doing some self-screening. I guess part of that I wouldn't mind seeing is, I don't know exactly the wording around it, but some self-quarantine after visiting a high transmission area.
It's part of, yeah, it, it's in, like, every single time I send a communication out, I'm going to include the link to the governor's travel order every single time. Just because that, that, you know, that's one of those things that, I mean, there are people who have to do things. It's not like, I can think of the number of people with whom I've had conversations who are driving their kid off to college. And that college might be in a state that's not Vermont. So, yeah, that's going to cause problems. And it'll cause more problems if people don't comply with it.
And I don't know if we've thought, I mean, tents are great and I know we're talking HVAC, so I don't know what opening windows will do for that too, just to get fresh air. That might totally interfere with HVAC, but.
It, it, there is, you know, in general, in the general part of the plan, if you look through where it talks about HVAC, there are some general recommendations in some of the advisories about opening windows when possible, keeping interior doors open when possible. I think the biggest thing to consider in terms of HVAC, HVAC is while we would like to be able to get to filters that have the recommended, what's called MERV rating, the number is 13. There is a balance point that at some point you're getting less air back into the building. And as a result, you can't get the volume of air into the building. So perhaps we'll be somewhere in between. I don't know. But we do have, we're getting a second analysis on that because we, we're just not satisfied with the first one. And this is a company that can do far more comprehensive work to also do air testing. So that when they put in particular filters, they're also going to be testing the air. They're going to be looking at the volume of air that's exchanged along with increasing the filtration and, and what that balance looks like. And trust me, I'm no expert in this stuff. So I, I spent a good amount of time with Heath and then called another superintendent who, for some reason, knows a lot about MERV rating. So.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thanks. We need to set a date to take the vote on the reopening plan. I think we've talked about Tuesday, August 18th as being the suggestion.
I know people can't meet on the 19th and I don't think the commissioner will give us until Thursday. I also think that families, that's, that's about the point where we need to let families know. You know, if we're letting them know live before a school committee and I'm sending out a communication the following day, that, that's about the same amount of time as they have, if not a little bit more than they normally would in an annual school year in terms of getting all the information about the start of school. So it gets us closer to the data. But the commissioner is probably not going to let us, I mean, we don't have a need to go to the 20th or 21st. And I think the 18th makes sense. I think that's enough time for parents to get information back in a survey to take a look at the plans and, and make their own family decisions. So.
Right. And that was, that was the reason we spoke about the 18th originally was to give the families a week, about a week to get their responses back to us to make sure they had enough time. Jennifer?
Families are making decisions whether to be fully remote or, or hybrid when it's appropriate and depending on how we start the year. Is that going to factor into classes at all? Because I just wouldn't want to see a class where majority of the kids choose remote because that's best for their family. And then there's unbalanced amounts of kids in the hybrid situation in the physical building. Or teachers, you know, doing remote with, you know, just having that balance might be something to consider after we get these survey results from the parents. But it's not heavy one way or the other. I know most of the, you know, the class lists have been decided on, so that's something that might change things a little bit. So everybody probably needs to just know that things can change. You know, if we go hybrid mid-year, maybe, you know, want to switch teachers. So we might want to think about that ahead of time.
Okay, anything else? In that case, we will schedule a special meeting for Tuesday, August 18th. It's still virtual at this point. We may need more than one item, but it will basically be to discuss the reopening plan and vote on it. Is 6:30 still best for people? Is there any interest in changing it? 6:30 works? Okay, that's what we'll schedule. Thank you. We, item H, we already did. We amended the fiscal year '21 budget and voted on it.
Jane, I'm sorry, can I interrupt just one second?
I'm sorry, sure.
Just to be clear, that, that we're only discussing that on the 18th.
Well, I think we, it's come up that we may need to add another item or two to the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would recommend, even if we do it by Zoom, that me, you and Cassie get together Thursday morning-ish. So Thursday at some point to put together the agenda and post it.
Yes, yes. I made a note for myself to that effect, so I wouldn't forget.
Okay.
Yes, just to make sure it's, and it's posted in enough time.
Yep.
Jennifer?
I would anticipate a lot of public participation in that meeting and, and also comments from the school committee members. So we just might want to think about a process, you know, reminding folks of trying to keep it to two or three minutes. Everyone will have a chance and, and then, you know, maybe doing like a, everyone go around for, even school committee members. But I think there's going to be a lot of questions and comments next, next time before we vote.
Thank you. And if we could emphasize that the most important way for families to get their interest expressed would be to be sure and fill out the survey, please. That would really be valuable information. Really help us a lot. Okay. The last item on, for business is the school choice. Having a potential vote to close the remaining seats. What happened was at our usual time, we decided to have school choice for the coming school year. And the district determined how many seats were available. The school choice option was opened up to people and people who are interested responded. They were notified probably, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, by a week or two ago, they were notified if they had applied, whether they had received school choice or not. And the thought is there, there are still some, we might want to close the remaining seats now so that we're not dealing with unknown numbers of students as the year progresses. You might want to speak to that, Brian?
Yeah, so part of, part of this recommendation comes from a discussion at our administrative meetings and just in our collaboration and thinking about as we were going through some of the protocols and, you know, we began to look at, well, we have zero cases of coronavirus in Gill, zero cases of coronavirus in Montague over the last 14 days. But given that we have already accepted the school choice according to policy for everybody who applied up through today, that, and those who, for whom we didn't have seats were given letters of denial, that I just wanted to bring forward this, the recommendation that we just close our seats for the, for this school year. We can revisit it at some point in time if things go back to normal. But what that will do is reduce the number of people coming in from other communities, even if it's only by a kid or two. You know, those communities were not necessarily reading their numbers, but I just figured it would, very much like limiting visitors in the building, that it would serve us well to not shift mid-year by taking on two or three kids. I also didn't want to be in a situation that if for some reason we had gone hybrid and another school was still remote, that kids were going to jump into us and create competition and then also increase the likelihood of transmission from another community. So I just thought it made sense, given that everybody who wanted to come was given the opportunity, the policy was applied as it's supposed to be. And every student who could be, we didn't have to do any lottery. Every student who could be accepted was accepted. Those places where we had spots, we denied. But I don't want to be in a situation, nor, nor do members of the administrative team, where we're making mid-year changes and to cohorts and things like that because we have kids coming in. You know, and it's a unique set of circumstances. I'm, I'm very pro-school choice because I believe that we can continue the process of creating an educational environment that people will want to come to, now that I've worked with people on this team. So it's a little bit of a bummer, but it's exclusively for safety reasons.
Jennifer?
I do agree with that. My only thing that I want to address is I've heard some staff concerned, at least two of them, about teaching in the district and having their student in another district that may be running on a different model versus hybrid, remote, things like that. So just wondering how we're going to address that and if we need to look at our school policy for.
Yeah. So can I, if I, if I can address that, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I did a bunch of research on that and I would recommend that sometime when we have Russell in executive session, that we talk about that if we, if we want to revisit. For right now, I was under the impression that the commissioner was going to be giving some type of dispensation to superintendents to, or direction or a directive to allow the children of educators to school choice into the district. However, he has not done that yet. So I did do a pretty extensive amount of research on that today and had a conversation with Russell. It would actually, it's not legal for me to have allowed the teacher in at this particular, the teacher's kids in at this point. And if the school committee were to do that without the commissioner. the commissioner saying something or providing a directive, our school's attorney believes that that opens up a can of worms that's gonna leave us vulnerable to having just really inconsistent policy that would be applied. We risk applying that unethically. If the commissioner gives us a directive, then we know it's temporary, and maybe we hold on to those kids going forward in the future, and that's ideal. But, you know, I'd like to continue to consult with the attorney. He wanted to talk to me about what's happened in some other districts that have done that, where they've done it as part of their contract, but in fact, it's not actually legal. So it's one of those things that, it's not legal. So we would have to, we would have to have the commissioner dictate to us that we could do it because of the special circumstances.
I hope they do, because it's gonna certainly make a hardship for a lot of, a lot of our staff.
Absolutely, yep.
COVID changes everything.
Right.
Are you making, are you making a T-shirt?
No, but it really, I guess that's the slogan, right?
We could do that. I think I also saw something about that, Brian. The suggestions somewhere that it was in somebody's proposal.
Yeah, it's been in the advisories, that the on-the-desks top stuff that has come out, things that he's thinking of doing, and in some of the comments, so it's been in more than one conversation that he's had with this superintendent across the state, but no decision has been rendered on it yet, so...
Okay.
Certainly, if the staff are here, then we're already close to that household, so...
Do we want to vote on that now? Whether we want to close the remaining seats until further notice, perhaps? I'm not sure how best to phrase it. Have you thought about the phrasing, Brian?
Oops, sorry.
Haley?
I just had a question. Do we have a rough estimate of how many seats we're talking about?
It's not many. There aren't any available at the high school. So there's, it's a handful throughout, scattered throughout the elementary schools and predominantly Sheffield. So there's not a lot of space in the district anyways. And I think just if you were to say until further notice, that, you know, if for some reason things improve, you could direct, you could revote to open up school choice again as of the date of the school committee meeting, and direct the principals to provide the superintendent with the number of seats that they currently have available again, which we could just go right back to the list that we have and take a look at who has moved in or moved out of the district. So it would be an easy enough thing to reinstate at any point in time if things go back to normal. A vaccine comes out, or the virus just disappears, as some people have promised, then, you know, we can, we can pull it back in, or even as we move into next year, because it has to be annually voted anyways.
Correct. Haley?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that we put it in the school committee calendar at some point in the future to revisit it.
Good idea.
But it doesn't get lost.
Okay. Yes, I know we have to revote it annually, but we probably should revisit it even before then.
I would, I would recommend that we, why don't we revisit it at, you know, even if, just for discussion, when we're talking about, once we've switched to a different model, learning model, if we ever have, I mean, that would be a point of consideration.
Mike has his hand up, too. Okay, Mike?
And you've been talking with Russell about this, but I was just gonna bring up that we vote on it once a year. I'm not sure we can change that vote once you voted on it, but, I mean, when I say I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure. But once we, as a school committee approve it, but you, the superintendent and admin decide how many seats are available, I don't know that that can't change, because circumstances change. If you had, you know, three sets of triplets move in, you'd have to change the number of seats available, so you may be able to just change the number of seats available, but just check it with Russell, because I'm not sure we can, once we've voted, if we can vote more than once in a year.
Yeah, well, basically what we're doing is, we're voting to close school choice temporarily, so that those seats that we've made available are no longer made available by policy. So, but yes, we can revisit it, but it has, it has to come from the school committee vote. I'm not authorized to just say, oh, yeah, you can come in.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
If people are willing, we could vote it, with the understanding that if Russ says it's not legal, that we'll then not do it. Bill? I'm sorry, Brian first, what?
Yeah, it's okay. No, he did say this was the way to do it. That's why I put it on the, I recommended to put it on the agenda, so it wasn't done, it was done in consultation with the school's attorney.
Thank you.
I had asked him if I could just simply change the numbers.
Right.
So that we could still be a school choice district, but for the time being, and he said, no, the school committee should just close it.
Okay, thank you, that helps. Bill?
I was, that confuses me, because I was thinking that all we're doing is cutting off the acceptance of students, but we haven't, but it's not retroactive, so you're not denying kids that you've already accepted. You're just closing the availability, and I see that as a discerning difference.
Right, thank you for pointing that out. I had originally thought about mentioning that, yes, we are not saying that anything we've already decided has changed. If a child has been accepted for school choice, they're still accepted.
Yeah, so the language would be the remaining seats. Closing, closing, eliminating the availability of remaining seats until further, for the 2021 school year, until further notice.
I will accept a motion. Oh, Jennifer, question first?
So if we got guidance, and that changed higher up than us, would we be able to reopen it for staff?
Yes, that would be a point at which we'd need to revisit it.
So we can just take another vote if that, if that happens?
Yep, and if it's something that's a directive from the commissioner, then I would just talk to Russell and say, hey, can I just accept all of the children of staff? So I have no, I'm not adverse to that at all, I'm totally supportive of that, but yeah, we need, we need permission to be able to do it. And there may be a stipulation for policy, so for example, you know, we accept the siblings of children who are already here first. That's really clear in both inter-district, inter-district, the two ways that we take kids into the district, inside or outside the district. But I would imagine that this would be given a similar threshold, so it would probably come just behind siblings of kids that are already enrolled, and we may be able to get language from them that says, even for those districts who have closed their school choice seats, they may accept the children of employees. So that's, that's what we're waiting for from the commissioner, is to give us that
So moved.
Okay, Mike moved. You have a second?
Second.
Did I hear Cassie?
And Bill, either one.
We'll have a third, but, okay. Mike moved, Cassie seconded. All those in favor of voting to eliminate remaining school choice seats for this school year? Is that correct, Brian? All those in favor?
You.
I think I'm frozen, so some of you are, too.
I...
I think Jane's frozen.
Frozen.
So we have one, so seven in favor, one abstention.
Oh, okay, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I froze right at the wrong moment. Could we just repeat that? I missed it. All those in favor? If you could wave your hand, some of you are really hard to hear.
No, wave both hands.
Yeah, I'm...
It's gonna give me a headache, Mike.
I've been losing the connection again. Did someone else see it that could tell me?
So seven in favor, any opposed? No abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention.
And my abstention, thank you. I just lost connection at the wrong time. Thanks. Takes a village to have a committee. Okay, approval of minutes. We don't have any minutes at the moment, which is fine. Agenda requests, I've written down anything that people mentioned for any of the future meetings at this point, but as something occurs to you, as Brian said, he and Cassie and I will work on the agenda for the special meeting on Thursday. So the next meeting will be the special meeting on the 18th, and then the next few regular meetings are listed after that. Haley?
I was just wondering if it would make sense to put it into a future policy review about staff children on school choice?
That reminds me, Mass Association of School Committees has issued a large list of revisions or additions to current policies due to the COVID issues. I have sent those on to Russ, so that his group can advise us about wording, and I know there were a lot of back-and-forth emails from other districts, the longest, most complicated one really confused people, so we have suggestions, and his associate, Kim, has sent us the suggested way to handle it.
You froze again.
Action, but no sound.
Jane, you might have to say that again.
Oh, yeah, I think we've been at this too long. My computer said, get off. Wasn't me. I will try to include those in the packet for the 25th. We'll have a discussion, which will be the second reading, and then we can vote on them at the meeting after that. They're all temporary, that are in effect while COVID exists, but we have a lot to look at, so we'll put those on the agenda. And I apologize, we have not set an official school committee calendar of meetings for the school year, which we usually do right after elections, because for some reason, right after elections, we were caught up with COVID planning, and I totally forgot. And thanks to Haley for reminding me, we probably should do that. So that will be on our next regular school committee meeting on the 25th as well. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, that sounds good. Do I have one of those? Mike? Thank you.
Second.
Second, Heather? Any discussion? All those in favor? Looks like we're good. All right, thank you very much. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Night.
Goodbye.